This conference will now be recorded.
Okay, very good. In accordance with Governor Lamont's executive order 7B issued on March 14th, 2020, the Stratford zoning board of appeals will be holding a remote public hearing this evening, September 1st, and I will call the meeting to order at 7:00 PM. Chairman Petraselli is unable to be with us this evening, as is Commissioner Elder. So, alternate David DeCilio will be sitting for Commissioner Elder, and alternate Judy Clary will be sitting for Chairman Petraselli. On the agenda this evening, we have three items. However, items number one and items number three. Item number one being 1692 West Broad Street, and item number three, 175 Lighthouse Avenue. Neither of those petitioners submitted their letters of mailing. They failed to complete those. So as a result, those petitions will be held over and will appear on the October 6th meeting of the Board of Zoning Appeals. So this evening, we will only be proceeding with petition number two, which is 355 Main Street. Do we have the petitioner present? Or their representative? In either case, I will ask Commissioner Young to please read petition number two for the record.
I'm sorry, who did you ask?
I asked you, Mary. Commissioner Young, please read number two for the record. Thank you.
Mary Young speaking. 3555 Main Street. Petition of T&amp;J Realty, Inc. Seeking a site plan review and variances of Section 7.1.1.1. Section 7.1.1.1, parentheses number two. Section 7.4, Grand Open Space. Section 12.5.1.1. Section 12.7.1. And section 12.12.2. To convert a first-floor professional office and two apartments into a four-unit residence apartment building. Pre-existing, non-conforming property size and shape. Thank you, Mr. Chairman, and we're grateful to have you at the helm.
Thank you very much. Gavin Forrester speaking again. Is the petitioner or their representative present? You may need to unmute yourself, petitioner. Jay, I'm seeing caller 1, 2, and 3, so I'm not sure if petitioner is one of... The petitioner or their representative is either caller 1, 2, or 3. I don't see anyone else on the meeting that would indicate they're from the petitioners.
It could be one of those unnamed callers. And because my internet is down and I'm at my local middle school running this meeting in the parking lot, I cannot unmute them myself. So it's going to be... The applicant is going to have to either unmute themselves or... Or this is going to be a very short meeting, even shorter than we thought. Let me see if I can... Let me see.
Jay, Mary Young. This is not the first time this has happened. It happens where I work. Do you happen to have the cell number of any of the applicants represented or perhaps text them?
You read my mind. I'm looking it up right now to see if... I think they just have their office number, but I will try it.
Hello? Hello?
Hello.
Hello.
I hear a voice.
Hi, this is Nick Owen here. How are you?
Good. Caller number four.
Oh, okay. I'm trying to get this thing to work on the computer, but I think I messed it up and my wife is trying to help me do it, but it's not working right now. So you're going to have to listen to my melodious voice over the telephone.
We can do that. We can do that. So the petition's representative is here, so we will allow him to proceed with his presentation.
Okay, thank you, guys. Nick Owen, 972 East Broadway, Stratford, Connecticut. I'm acting on behalf of 355 Main Street, Petition of T&amp;J Realty, Inc. Wherein, Mr. Blake, the owner of the Realty LLC, is the owner of all of those properties that you see on the map, which I assume you have in front of you. Specifically, the one that we're here this evening for is the one in the upper-left-hand corner of the map, which is on the right-hand side of the map, but the property location is to the... Is the farthest-left building, which is demarcated, known as NNF Blake Stratford, LLC, Volume 3518/P234355, two-story wood-frame house. Now, I'm sure you're all familiar with Paradise Green. Now, this particular... This particular home, along with the other buildings, are all pre-existing, non-conforming, way back when, prior to... Some of them are prior to 1928. In 2015, just to give you a quick overview of this, this property was subject to a prior waiver of a number of parking spaces, which was granted, and then a formal petition before the zoning commission to put a second story on most of the property over there, and that has not been acted upon. However, the waiver is, as of record, a waiver can never be taken away from the property, so the waiver runs with the property. Mr. Hibanski can indicate to you, either now or shaking his head later, that I sat with him a number of times, along with John Roskowski independently, trying to figure out the simplest way to do something that, at least I think is simple, is to convert the first floor of the property at 3555 Main Street from a commercial use to a residential use. The second floor is already residential, or two apartments on the second floor. Prior to us formulating this application, the dentist that was formerly in there was in there for 25 years. He vacated and closed his practice some 14 months ago. And Mr. Blake has been unable to rent this as a commercial property for some 14 months. And he's concerned, and his concern from the standpoint is he's still paying maintenance on the building. He's paying property taxes on a 50% vacancy, and he would like to do something with it, and this... Because it is a house, it looks like a house. It's structured and built as a house. The logical thing would be to convert the entire building, that being the first floor from commercial to residential property. Now, Mr. Hibanski and I sat down, as I indicated, on several occasions, trying to formulate what waivers we would require, what we would need to do this. And as you can see by his write-up on August 18th, 2020, we pretty much have to jump through hoops to get to where we want to go for something which we consider is very simple and very logical, and it fits. The request fits right in with the surrounding neighborhood, where there are other properties in the vicinity that are commercial in nature. There are some residential properties in nature. And this is a perfect spot for a couple of young couples or single people to house themselves in Paradise Green, where there is plenty of opportunity to walk to just about everything. There's every kind of store imaginable that you can think of, as you well know, in Paradise Green. Jay did indicate to me and gave me some information on what is called the missing middle housing market, wherein there are two-family houses or single-family houses in areas of town that are adjacent or part of commercial an opportunity, where there is no housing or very little housing. And this would fit right into it, as I just indicated, that you can walk to just about everywhere. Because of the situation here, number of waivers were required, and I'm sure you have a copy of all your staff comments on this, and you can go through them, and some of them I agree with Jay on, some of them I don't agree with Jay on. There is, as you can see by the plan, there is virtually no space on the entire property for anything other than what currently exists. No changes are planned for the exterior of the building. Obviously, the interior will be gutted and constructed for use as two apartments, two-two-bedroom apartments. Jay also indicated that some landscaping might be desirable and requested, or at least for the board to take a look at the three parking spaces that are non-conforming on Paradise Green Place, that adjoining Paradise Green Place. And those are numbered on your plan 1, 2, and 3. Those are not what you would consider "legal parking spaces." However, they have been there forever, and what we don't want to do is eliminate any more parking spaces if we don't have to. There is plenty of room in the pie-shaped pieces in the front of the property. Even though that property adjoins 355 Main Street, it is not part of 355 Main Street. But since TJ Realty and Mr. Blake owned all of these, the entire complex out there, there is no issue with putting a couple of planters in those hash-marked spaces, one right in front of 3555, one in front of 3561, 3563, and 3565. Also along Paradise Green Place, you'll see another triangular piece next to parking space number 20, and there's no issue with putting a planter there for some type of green landscaping. So at least it dresses it up a little bit. The variances that are requested are all of the variances that apparently, with the exception of one, that are required in order to initiate changing the first floor from a commercial to a two-bedroom units. It looks like an awful lot of work, an awful lot of verbiage, to do something that, at least I think, is simple and that fits right in the complex. It certainly does not change the character of the neighborhood. The request for the reduction of parking actually increases the parking in a very strange way. Wherein, the commercial portion, where the dentist was on the first floor, required more parking for his commercial use as a professional office than it would as a two-bedroom apartments in that building. And with that, I'm going to turn it over to any one of you ladies or gentlemen, since I can't see you, that may have some questions, or you may have some questions of Jay of exactly what he thinks is probably the best route to go based on this two-and-a-half, two-and-a-quarter pages of his comments and notes. And I don't say that begrudgingly. Jay worked, along with John Rosowski, very hard in trying to put this together to get to where we want to get and get approval. But it seems to be very complicated, because there's no simple language in the zoning book, how to get to where we want to get without doing this, given the fact that this is a pre-existing, non-conforming parcel in a complex that has been there forever. So if any of you good people have any questions at all, I'm more than happy to try to answer them.
Thank you, Mr. Owen. This is Acting Chairman Forrester speaking. If any commissioner says any questions, please raise your hand, and I'll recognize you. Commissioner Young.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, and thank you, Mr. Owen.
Mary, how are you?
Very well, thank you. If I could review what I believe I heard you say, to make sure I understand correctly. You referenced a prior variance or waiver. Not clear to me what the reference was to. Is that in play, or you just...
I'm sorry. Mary, say that again. I missed part of what you said. Please say that again.
Again, Mary Young, for the record. I'm trying to get clarification about a reference you made to a prior waiver, or perhaps you used the word variance. Is that being applied to this proposal, or are you just referencing that as historical documentation?
I referenced that as historical documentation, just to make the board aware that there was a prior application on the adjoining property. Actually, two prior applications on the adjoining property. It has basically nothing to do with this current application. However, Jay suggested in his comments that a legal document be drawn up, since all of the parking, with the exception of the three, that a joint Paradise Place will be on other properties. But keep in mind, those other properties are owned by TJ Realty, and Jay felt it might be appropriate to put on the land records a document suggesting that these additional parking spaces for the first floor, or actually, the entire housing in 3555 Main Street, be noticed. And at least it's documented someplace that they have the legal right to use those.
Thank you. In addition, I wanted to get a better understanding about the attempts made by yourself and the Stratford planning and zoning staff to design something. Was consolidation of this lot with the adjoining lots considered? And if it was, why isn't that in front of us?
So are you... Is your question simply, did the owner or in the discussions with Jay consider joining these properties as one large piece?
That's correct. That's my question.
Yeah, the answer to that question is no.
No.
The owner is not interested. The owner is not interested in doing that, because there are several there are several separate first mortgages on these properties. So he didn't want to convolute the entire piece and go back to the bank and do, you know, a number of redocumentation, a number of refinancing on all of it. He wanted to leave it as it is. So we did not take that into consideration when we formulated the application. And quite honestly, Mary, no disrespect, I think that would be overkill for something as simple as I think this is.
Thank you for your answer. One more question. You are familiar with Jay's August 18th comments, obviously. It appears Jay had not exhausted his suggestions, because he memorializes some of them in his comments. Can you speak to some of the alternatives he references, and whether or not you're willing to pursue them?
Are you talking about items on bottom of page two? Items one and two, and then on the top of the third page? Is that... Those are the items that you're talking about?
Perhaps, if Mr. Hibanski is still able to participate. I know he's challenged working on the parking lot. Jay, do you want to memorialize, because you can summarize it better than I, what alternative proposals you suggested, the conditions?
Sure. Jay Hibanski here, and I can see you all, but you can't see me. So start waving if you cannot hear me, or I am breaking up. So a few suggestions that I had were that, you know, should the ZBA decide that they are interested in approving this application, they should do so with several condition... I recommend several conditions. One, that a revised site plan be submitted, which reflects the accurate count of parking on-site, even if the non-compliant parking spaces end up remaining. The accurate count of parking, available parking spaces should be revised. Number two, that the parking spaces, either the... If the nine required parking spaces are indeed waived, that a minimum of four shall be reserved, signed and reserved somewhere on the abutting site, where the applicant feels is going to be most appropriate for their tenants. And that, you know, that legal document reserving those spaces for those tenants in the event that, you know, properties change hands or this property sells, those will be reserved for them in perpetuity. And that be filed in the town clerk's office to memorialize it. And I have a caveat to two, and it's that, you know, if the zoning board of appeals feels that they would rather see those three informal, non-compliant parking spaces in front of 3555 Main Street, if they would rather see those be landscaping, then those should be converted to landscaping, and that would be an additional condition. And then lastly, that several tall or flowering deciduous trees chosen by the tree warden be planted in some of the suggested cross-hatched cross-hatched areas in the parking lot that abut the property to the south. I thought that that might be an opportunity to offset, should the board be interested in considering this application, that might be a good opportunity to offer some more green space on one of our major commercial thoroughfares and contribute to the streetscape. And look, I understand the applicants... I mean, this is a very small lot, very unique, very difficult to create a lot like this today. And, you know, I think the suggestions that I've made would help to offset some of the variances that have been requested. You know, Commissioner Young, I hope that answers or satisfies your request there.
Absolutely, it does. Thank you. Going back to Mr. Owen. Again, I know you're familiar with what Jay wrote and summarized. Can you speak to...
Yes, I am.
Some of the alternative design suggestions you just heard?
Yes, I'm sorry. I didn't mean to step on your words, Mary. I fully agree, and we have no issue with item number one. A revised site plan shall be submitted to the Office of Planning and Zoning prior to issuance of a building permit. No issue with that. Have no issue with item number two of Jay's suggestion. That can also be adhered to. I do take some issue and have some concerns about eliminating those three parking spaces along Paradise Green Place, as I previously indicated. They have been there forever. They are used. They are certainly non-conforming. There's no question about that. So I do have an issue with that. We would like those to remain, if the board can see its way clear to do that. And also part of that, as far as the landscaping, I previously indicated that we are willing to put planters. We really don't want to dig through asphalt and concrete to plant trees there that may or may not live because of all of the concrete and asphalt that surround them and the commercial nature of that property. But we are willing to put planters there to offset some of the areas that have no greenery whatsoever. So pretty much, we can conform with Jay's suggestion, with the exception of, we would prefer not to do that, to dig up those areas and plant large trees in those areas.
Thank you, Mr. Owen. Mary Young again. If I heard correctly, yes to recommendations one and two. Recommendation two talks about reserving the nine spaces off-site. Do you know if that would trigger a new variance for those off-site lots if you were to take away nine spaces from them to dedicate it to this?
Well, what we would do is we would dedicate them both ways. Either/or could use them in perpetuity. To dedicate them specifically for the apartments could create an additional problem.
And as someone who's familiar with renting properties, if I'm your renter, won't I be looking for some commitment that that is my parking space? I don't have to share it with whoever gets there first, or do you think that's feasible?
I would say that you are correct in your assessment, but for the fact that there are numerous parking spaces right in front of 355. And certainly, if we have residential tenants, which we do on the second floor, obviously, most of the commercial tenants close their businesses at 4:30, 5 o'clock, 6 o'clock at night. So there's always plenty of parking, not only in front, but behind the 355. There's, I'm sorry, behind the building next to where it says one-story masonry frame building. There are parking spaces behind there that circle around the entire property that encompass everything on that entire site. So I don't see where that would create an issue.
Thank you again. I'll let others weigh in.
Thank you, Commissioner Young. Is there any other commissioners that have any questions? Any other commissioners that have any questions? No, I just have... Yeah, make sure that I'm reading it right. There is no parking on that Paradise Place, correct? So you're not able to actually park on the street. Is that correct, Mr. Owen, Paradise Green Place?
That is correct.
And there are public utilities that run at the rear of the building in terms of a telephone pole with high-tension electric transmission wires. Is that correct?
Yes, that is correct. I certainly would be concerned about trees being planted of any particular height, particularly in that area. I know that the UI is very concerned about situations like that. So I do applaud you with regards to planters, and I fully understand that not digging into asphalt, having tried to plant some bushes in my front yard and finding out that my old driveway from a previous owner some 50-plus years ago is where I was planning on planting some trees as my contractor came with his backhoe to do some landscaping. I can completely understand how you don't want to tear up blacktop and see what's underneath it in order to see whether or not you can put some plantings that would survive. So I do think that if you were... If this application does go forward, if you work with planning and zoning staff with regards to some type of aesthetic planters, I think that would be something that I would definitely put into the approval of the application.
We're more than willing to comply with that, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you, Mr. Owen. Is there any other commissioner questions? If not, what I will do is I will ask if any of the callers that are on the meeting wish to speak in favor of this petition. Speak in favor? Last call for anyone speaking in favor. Is there anyone who is on this meeting that is here to speak in opposition to this proposal? Opposition? More time for opposition hearing then. Mr. Hibanski, did we receive any emails or other correspondence from anyone either supporting or in opposition of this petition that we are not yet aware of?
Mr. Chairman, I don't believe so. I'm just thumbing through the application file quickly just to make sure something did not come in unbeknownst to me. And no, we did not.
Thank you, Mr. Hibanski. Well, that having been said, since we have nobody else in speaking, either in favor or opposed, the chair would entertain a motion to close this portion of the public hearing on this petition. Does anyone want to make that motion?
Motion to close, Mary Young.
Do I hear a second to that motion? Second by David DeCilio? Any discussion? Hearing then. Roll call. Vote for those in favor because of the fact that this is a remote meeting. Commissioner Young.
I vote in favor to close the hearing.
Commissioner Streets? I believe that was an affirmative. Yeah, unfortunately, we're not able to hear you, but I'll record that as a yes to close the hearing. Commissioner DeCilio?
Yes.
Commissioner Clary?
Yes.
Chair vote yes. Motion to close is accepted. Seeing that there are no other petitions on the public hearing, the other two having been pushed over until October 6th, the chair will entertain a motion to close the public hearing.
Mary Young, motion to close.
Here's a motion by Commissioner Young. Do I hear a second?
Judy Clary.
Second by Commissioner Clary. All those in favor will go by roll call. Commissioner Young?
Yay.
Commissioner Streets? Now we can hear you, yes. Commissioner Streets. Commissioner DeCilio?
Yes.
Commissioner Clary?
Yes.
Chair vote yes. Motion to close is passed. Chair votes yes. Motion to close is passed. I will now begin the Board of Zoning Appeals Administrative Session and call that to order. The first idle item on our administrative session is a vote on the applications in the September 1st, 2020 agenda. The chair will take a motion to take the only petition that we heard, 355 Main Street, off the table.
Mary Young, motion to take it off the table.
Motion by Commissioner Young. Do I hear a second?
Commissioner Streets, second.
Thank you, Commissioner Streets. All those in favor will do a roll call. Commissioner Young?
Aye.
Commissioner Streets?
Aye.
Commissioner DeCilio?
Aye.
Mr. Clary?
Aye.
Chair votes yes. Motion is on the floor. So does anyone wish to speak with regards to this petition? Commissioner DeCilio?
Yes, thank you, Mr. Chairman. You know, as a long-serving board member, I appreciate all of the effort that Mr. Hibanski put into a lot of the comments here. But if you take a step back, this application is to take 1,200 square feet of retail and convert it to, or commercial use into residential use. The three parking places in front of the building, I think, are critically needed. Because I think anything you take away is going to exacerbate a parking, potential parking problem. And even though the same owner owns both parcels, I think, this is my opinion, trying to impose off-site restrictions from the applicant's actual record application is a little bit unusual. I understand they're offered, and that's wonderful if they're accepted. That being the case, this is, I think, a real simple application. Either we think it's better as residential use as a pre-existing nonconforming small property, or, or we think it's better left as a retail use. My personal opinion, and I'm not floating a motion, is that based on its location, I seem to lean in favor of converting it to residential. If it was right on this strip, right on Main Street, I would be in total opposition because the market does have a cycle. And right now, there's no retail or office momentum in the marketplace, but there may be down the road. So anyway, that's my, my opinion on the application.
Thank you, Commissioner DeCilio. Anyone else have any comments with regards to the application? Commissioner Young?
Question for Mr. DeCilio. David, do I understand you are not a fan of recommendation number two in Mr. Hibanski's report?
I, I'm not in favor of, yeah, I'm not in favor of mandating any off-site improvements or any off-site mandates, even if they're offered. I know we had an application years ago for the Pizza and Company, and we said, well, the parking next door was going to be used. But then it kind of, I don't know, it doesn't feel right when you start adding those conditions in. I mean, the three parking places in the front. I mean, if, if the applicant wants to offer the planters, which I think they did, I think that's a great idea, even though it's off-site, but with the whole parking thing, it's just a concern of mine. I just, I mean, because also if I take my zoning hat off and put an investor hat on, I'm like, I don't know, when you start adding encumbrances to a parcel in favor of other parcels. Like you said, to your point, Mary, I'm looking at this aerial photo of, of the parking, and I don't know how many square feet that strip is, but I'll bet dollars to donuts that, that parking lot's nonconforming and doesn't have enough spaces. So by saying, well, you know, we can, this can use it, they can use it. You know, would I put my real estate company in that strip center if I knew six of the spaces were going to be possibly used by people partying next door at a little keg party in the first-floor apartment? My answer would be no. So was I clear on that? Was that too long an answer?
Thank you for the clarification.
Does any other commissioner have any comments? Or does any petitioner want to make a motion to either approve or reject the petition with, with restrictions? Commissioner Young?
Perhaps the chairman can remind me what hardship was offered by the applicant should a majority wish to approve this application. I personally concur with Mr. DeCilio that if looking at retaining existing conditions versus trying to address the missing middle as proposed by the applicant, I am a fan of trying to do something different as proposed than maintain what's out there now, which is what we would end up with if we denied this. But I'm loathe to encourage people to make an application, creating their own hardship. And I'd feel much better supporting this if I thought there was hardship on the record. And I'm sorry, I didn't ask Mr. Owen to restate it. But if someone else was listening more intently than I, perhaps they can remind me what's on the record that we think could get us across finish line if a majority wanted to do that. Thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner Young. I would refer you to the Zoning Board of Appeals Planning Staff Review, which, besides the fact says that this is a nonconforming lot pre-existing, that the alternative options that were there would actually create a technical hardship on the commercial property, which is also owned by the applicant. In addition, the nature of the property, with the adjacent property being commercial in, in nature, there is not enough open space that can be created of 20% based upon the physical plot of 3555 Main Street. So there is a hardship in the requirement for the open space necessity because only 1.9% could possibly be provided on the parcel as it stands. And certainly where the applicant is not proposing to raise his current structure and put in a new structure. So there is a hardship with regards to the physical nature of the property in that respect. I don't think that we really needed or found any hardship in section 12.7.1. And I would actually refer to Mr. Hibanski if he could clarify what exactly that, that section refers to and why it would not be applicable in this petition. Mr. Hibanski?
Yes, Mr. Chairman, can you just restate the, the section that you're looking at?
Yeah, it's in your comments. Basically, it says, lastly, the applicant has requested a waiver of section 12.7.1, which does not appear to apply to this application and should not be considered in the ZBA's decision. Could you just highlight upon that as to why you feel it's not an applicable section that needs to be waived?
Well, I don't have the, I don't have the, the regulations actually in front of me, unfortunately. But after speaking with the applicant, and I can summarize or paraphrase the, the regulation, it essentially says that no driveway shall, and, and Mr. Owen, oh, he's not, he can't speak. The, it essentially says that no driveway can go over any sidewalk on a new development. I, I didn't feel that that was even, even applied to the current application. I reached out to the applicant. I asked him why he included it in his application. And it could have been a typo. He agreed with me in our conversation that it indeed did not need to be considered by the Zoning Board of Appeals because it did not apply to this application.
Okay. So either way of work, can you say, if, if this is, if this petition is considered in a favorable nature, we would have to make a recommendation to just, I'll, I'll ask Attorney Florrick just for some clarification on that. Do we need to do a carve-out if this is a petition that is going to be put forward for approval? Do we need to do a carve-out on the section 12.7.1 because it's not applicable, but it is part of the application?
That's an interesting question. I, I'm reading the regulation now, and it seems like it only applies to, can you hear me, by the way? I'm sorry.
Yes.
Okay. It seems like it only applies to a non-residential use. So it would seem to not apply here because they're applying for residential use. I suppose the, the ZBA could just make it part of their approval or denial that they, they, they strike any requirements in regards to 12.7.1.
Yeah, that's what I thought. Thank you very much. We haven't gotten to that point yet. Commissioner Young, was I able to highlight through reading the staff review what the hardships were that were not articulated by the petitioner?
You were reminded by the paragraph on page two of Mr. Hibanski's report where he says, however, the unusually small lot size and depth would qualify as legitimate hardship per section eight dash six of the Connecticut General Statutes. Sounds good. Thank you.
Thank you. Is there any other commissioner that wishes to comment or discuss this petition? If not, the chair will entertain some sort of motion either to approve, deny, or table. Anyone want to make a motion? We either have to approve, deny, or table. We can't leave it on the agenda.
I felt like Mr. DeCilio was close to making a motion.
Mr. DeCilio, I recognize you.
This is David DeCilio. I'd like to make a motion to approve 355 Main Street petition of T&amp;J Realty, Inc., in part, and deny in part. Approve all of the application and deny 12.7.1, which does not apply as, as presented.
Hey, thank you. Do I hear a second to that?
I'll second it if Mr. DeCilio wants to speak to if any of Mr. Hibanski's recommendations would be incorporated. For instance, I thought number one was not objectionable to Mr. DeCilio, but I'll let him speak.
Thank you. Commissioner DeCilio?
I'm reading one now. Hold on one moment, please.
Certainly.
Yes, okay. I will amend my motion to include that as a condition of approval, a revised site plan shall be submitted to the Office of Planning and Zoning prior to the issuance of any building zoning permits, which reflect an accurate count of compliant parking on the site and revised landscaping, well, and a period, which should be three spaces because they pre-exist, if I understand.
Okay, so that is an amendment to the motion. Commissioner Young, do you accept that as, as part of the second?
Almost there. And the hardship you're citing?
Oh, I'm sorry, citing the hardship as pre-existing nonconforming structure. By the way, I believe this point referenced that, I think this was, I'm guessing originally a house converted to an office and now being converted back to residential. I don't know the history of it, but if I had a guess, looking at the structure, that's where I guess it would be.
I'm sorry, Ms. Mary Young again. Mr. Hibanski offered the unusually small lot size and depth would qualify as hardship. Is that a family?
Yeah, obviously, yeah. It's a pre-existing nonconforming lot size. I'm sure it's pre-existing, nonconforming setbacks. I mean, there's a plethora of nonconformity to this, this property.
Now that I've extracted that from you, I will second your motion happily.
Very good. So we have a motion and a second, and I will have discussion on the motion. Does anyone wish to discuss the motion? Seeing no further discussion, we will do a roll call vote for those to approve the petition with the restrictions that are applied. Commissioner Young?
Aye.
Commissioner Streets?
Aye.
Commissioner DeCilio?
Aye.
Commissioner Clary? Commissioner Clary, it looks like your screen is frozen. Commissioner Clary?
Bye.
Ah, Commissioner Clary.
You can't hear me?
Yes, we can hear you now. There's a delay. Commissioner Clary votes yes. The chair votes yes. Motion passes five to zero.
Okay.
There are no other petitions to be discussed, so we will now go to the approval of the minutes of the meeting.
I thank you, ladies and gentlemen. Have a good evening. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Owen. Thank you. Chair is looking for an approval of the minutes for July 7th. The chair will entertain a motion. Motion by Mary Young. Do I hear a second? Second by Commissioner Streets. I'll do a roll call because of the nature of the, the meeting that we're having. Commissioner Young?
Aye.
Commissioner Streets?
Aye.
Commissioner DeCilio?
Aye.
Mr. Clary?
Aye.
The chair votes yes. Mr. Hibanski, do we have any CAM site plan reviews this evening?
Jay Hibanski here. No, we do not.
Hey, item number four, any member concerns or comments? Commissioner Young?
My comment is my thanks to Mr. Forrester for rising to the occasion again. I'm thrilled. And Mr. Hibanski for overcoming technical challenges. Bravo to you. And Mr. Florrick, thank you for joining us.
You're welcome. Thank you very much. My pleasure to chair these meetings. Number five, any other items? It's kind of a generic term, but any other items? I see none. The next and final item on the agenda is adjournment. The chair will entertain a motion to adjourn.
Motion to adjourn.
Motion by Commissioner DeCilio, second by Commissioner Young. Roll call vote. Commissioner Young? Commissioner Streets?
Aye.
Commissioner DeCilio?
Aye.
Commissioner Clary?
Aye.
Chair votes yes. The meeting is adjourned. I just want to thank the alternates for their participation and for the regular members for their participation as well. I thank you all very much, and our next scheduled meeting is October 6th. And we know we have two petitions that will be there if the applicants remember to mail out their certificates of mailing. So I thank you all very much, and the meeting is adjourned.